Okay. Meeting seven oh three, and the Reverend Dunbar brought a selecting meeting to order for Thursday, January seventh, two thousand and twenty one. All three selectmen are present. Leo Martell is present and is recording the meeting for the public. And Linda Nickerson will be uploading that. Our town administrator is present and our library trustee is present. And how are you?
I'm good.
The first thing we're going to do is do appropriate meeting minutes from the previous meeting. Mike, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the regular minutes of December thirtieth as amended. Senator.
A motion made second in all favor.
Aye, aye. And I'll make a motion to approve the non-public meetings of December thirtieth as written.
Oh, second back. Motion to ban non-public. The time on those non-public meeting minutes is five twenty eight P M.
I think they're already sealed too.
Yeah. Okay. Open up quick to public comment, and you're going to get anything early? Okay. Done.
Dunbar Garden Club, hi, Don Larson, thirty-two Bernstein Drive. Dunbar Garden Club, we took the Christmas tree out of the fan stand today, but we left all the other lights going. There's a national campaign to keep the Christmas lights up longer this year to help help care workers feel better, you know, and kind of give them a little cheer a little bit longer. So if it's okay with the selecting light, you know, we run the lights a little bit longer this year.
I don't have any issue with that. You guys have an issue?
What if it happens a little bit longer?
Well, I don't know, probably July. No, I don't know. I'm able to take the Christmas lights down. I don't know about the trees. And that depends on how much snow's on the ground.
Let me put it in the end of January, end of the month.
Well, they don't get to see them anyways. They're too busy working.
Just kidding.
I have no issue with lights being up. I didn't say they look. I think we're starting maybe a long enough. End of the month is fine.
Is end of the month long enough for you, Don?
I mean, I'm amazed, yeah.
Okay. All of them is good.
We're doing it for the third of first.
January third first?
Yes.
Okay. You're going to convey that to your friend because she did call me this week asking about it.
Okay, public comments over. We go to town visits. The first one on the agenda tonight is Mary Gerard, the library director. She's on a telephone conference line, and she's got a proposed budget here for us tonight. Mike can hear us?
Okay. Can you hear you? My name is Katie McDonald. I'm on the, I'm on the library board of trustees, and I'm happy to represent the library. I think it would be an easier discussion with me in person. I've met Mary and I are very close. We own this together. Is that okay, Mary?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I think Mary has given to you the, you know, the short little presentation, PowerPoint presentation of what we've been doing over the past year on COVID. It's a very interesting, very interesting historical piece, I think, you know, for people to know, understand how towns work when faced with the calamity that we were this year. In terms of the budget for two thousand and twenty one, let me go back a little bit to two thousand and twenty. It's no surprise that we underspent what we were, what we were budgeted. But we expect, of course, in two thousand and twenty one, we're going to be back on on track with all of our expenses. Probably about almost seventy percent of the library budget goes toward personnel costs. We have two library employees in addition to a cleaning person. And we've had a plan, as you know, since two thousand and seventeen when Mary Gerard was hired, to take that position from a part-time position to a full-time position. And we've stretched that over, you know, this five-year period, four-year period to make that, to make that work. I think that everybody's satisfied that that plays with benefits and a, we've it's, I was looking at some figures today. In two thousand and fourteen, our personnel cost was sixty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars. In two thousand and twenty, our, we spent sixty-nine thousand, four hundred dollars. So over that five-year period by reallocating, totally reforming how we minister our public service, we've managed to make a richer personnel experience for the, for the community. I'm very pleased about that. That being said, other costs go up. We've seen the library services transition from an in-person checkout, one book at a time, to a, the downloadable environment, that computer offering Wi-Fi to the public. Our computer investments are much greater these days than they were even higher years ago, certainly more over ten-year period, you know, Wi-Fi service to the whole community in, in the parking lot. And this year, our budget is four thousand dollars more than our budgeted request last year. And that's mostly in the interior areas, in the area of licensing, and it's in the area of personnel. So the budget will be for one hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Then we requesting the town to fund a hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and nine dollars of that. I want to bring up one other point. In two thousand and seventeen, we decided to read the RFAs regarding lapsing funds. The town, basically, the library operates as a separate fund, budgetary entity, and has funds that can be town allocated and can also be separate endowment funds. And we have not exactly lived according to the accounting methods that the RFA is called for. In two thousand and seventeen or two thousand and eighteen, we decided, we learned about this. And we, I'm surprised it never came up in an, in an audit review. But in going over that, it's reformed how we account for funds. And last year, we gave back to the town lapsed funds of nine thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars. This year, we will give back, I shouldn't say give back, we will include the one thousand, eighty dollars as lapsed funds that will be subtracted from the overall budget request, budget of one hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars, and make the, the town request a hundred and nine dollars and three, a hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and nine dollars.
And the previous shares was a hundred and six.
Correct. The lapse funds issue is one that is confounded for many, many towns. Usually, it's not a big deal. There's a thousand dollars here, two thousand dollars here, there. Because we reformed our personnel allocation over these past four years, five years, we ran into this big amount, nine thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars last year. And I suspect that since the beginning of the library in eighteen ninety-three, there have been other amounts that haven't been included as lapsed funds. But we're correcting it now in the two thousand, you know, in the early twenty-first century. And going forward, of course, it should all be, it should be cleaner. I think our accounting should be cleaner.
Mary, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
On the payroll and salary that went from seventy to seventy-five thousand? That includes the one percent raise and the additional week?
We do not go by the town, the town's personnel policies are separate from the library.
So what I'm trying to get at is what, what was used to determine from seventy to seventy-five?
In two thousand and nineteen, excuse me, two thousand and twenty, we had budgeted seventy thousand in the personnel line. We spent sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars. And that is with a reduced payments and personnel. There were weeks that the library was closed. We were not using the, the cleaning woman wasn't coming in, the assistant, library assistant wasn't coming in. I think we request, we budgeted too little in two thousand and twenty. So for two thousand and twenty-one, we want to make sure that we have enough in there to cover a full body year.
They have the additional week that everybody else does this year.
They're paid, they can do it separately, and they get bi-weekly, Katie?
Mary, is it bi-weekly?
Bi-weekly, yeah.
But you'll still have an additional week in this year, right?
Again, you are separate. We do not, that is.
I just want to make sure you budgeted enough is what I'm trying to get at.
I think we have. We were, I think we have. It also includes six point four percent increase in health benefits. We've, I'm feeling more comfortable with seventy-five thousand, yeah.
Okay.
And that's, as you can see, that's the biggest increase that we've had.
Right. Yeah, there's only two other numbers that have changed at all when I can speak.
Yeah, there's a big one on the revised viewer. Or we will have got viewer books, audio, and DVDs. Viewer of those, we installed some streaming. The whole environment of the library is changing, has been changing for a while. Electronic access is going up almost fifty percent. You know, and accounting expenses insofar as licensing for QuickBooks, for instance.
All right, you have a question? You guys have any questions about so far? Again, I guess these are all preliminary budgets, but.
I do want to make a shout out to Mary Gerard for how she quickly transitioned in the pandemic to, there was no drop in service at any time. And even though we have pulled back on public contact right now, Mary's made it so it's invisible to the public.
Thank you, Mary.
I didn't hear most of that, but.
I think also, I think Mary should take credit for the fact that I think we're the, our library cars, our patrons are the highest in the town's history. So if you need a friend, you go to the library.
I'm going to do that again.
I'm seeing if they prove it. I appreciate you guys giving us this description of things that have been going on since the COVID has affected different departments within the town, so that helps out.
Very good. Any questions? We are always available.
One follow, just on lapse, you, you started off talking about the lapse funds.
Yes.
So they stay with the library?
No, that's the whole thing. Since eighteen ninety-three, they have been staying with the library.
And a couple of years ago, you started turning them back?
We started being honest.
Okay.
What do you think?
I like that.
How are we doing?
So you're turning them back, but then you're reallocating them this year?
Certain rules, yeah.
So, Wayne, is it like ours, we, because libraries suffered, I know, can they turn them in and then take them back? That's what I wanted to know.
What she has done with the lapsing surplus, thousand eighty dollars, is she's going to ask the town only for the hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and nine, which is, they're basically keeping that thousand eighty in the bank.
I follow that, but what I'm trying to ask you, like on our budget, if we put it back into the designated fund, we don't sit down and ask them for the, the last one, our budget comes through?
I think this, what they're doing is a cleaner request. They've documented, they have surplus. Rather than give it back to the town in a check and then asking for more because they've already, we've already raised and appropriated it, they're acknowledging that dollar amount is there and they're spending it down, is what I'm.
So you're including, including this part of this coming year's budget?
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah, so for accounting, is that going to be okay for you is what I'm trying to.
Yeah, no, I think that's fine.
The RFA requires us to do it this way, by the way. So I will say one other thing, and I think there's been a misunderstanding, and I want to clarify it. Book finds proceeds from copying, fax, book sales, their general donations, things like that, are considered non-lapsing funds and shouldn't be, I think our accounting method is weird, and I, we really need to revamp it to make it clearer. But that shouldn't be considered income that goes toward our regular operating budget. That we, the library, has control over those funds for special projects. And in fact, three years ago, I think it was three years ago, Mary, we installed a whole new computer system. It was many thousands of dollars. That was all taken out of those capital funds, not charged to the, to the operating funds. So that's the sort of thing we wouldn't have in advance.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, Mary.
Well, thank you.
Okay.
See you.
Thanks, Katie, for.
Do you want to, do you want to listen to the rest of the meeting?
No.
Aw, come on, Mary. Thank you, Mary.
It's good to do it this way. Thank you, Mary, for the opportunity.
Okay, thank you, all right.
Thanks for coming in person.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Don, you're up next. You led the cemetery trustee proposal remarks for two thousand and twenty-one. Don would like to discuss those.
On the boards here are two projects that we're looking at. They do the warrant article that did not involve any tax dollars. It's money that we're paying out in our trust that from previous sales. We've got, you know, the names on the different roads and that, that's, that's a possible fundraiser. This is the cremains garden. There's a hundred and fifty-five slots, and these are all three-by-threes here. And the area back of each group here goes back seven feet. And when the snow glows, you'll see I've got it all lined out with string in it. And we would put seven benches there. Benches are not included in this because I don't know how we're going to do it, but we're going to have more money coming in, and we'll do that separately for the front. And that, and then that brings in revenue. We put benches out there this spring. All of them are sold, all five of them are the David.
That's right.
So, and that's some of the money that we're using from the bench sales. That's going to help us lower the price, you know, from, from the trust fund. But I've got three different funds and the unexpected revenue that we get in that goes into here from our fundraising and also from the bench sales. And so that's.
So you want to do it one at a time and go, go through your warrant articles, Don? Is that what you wanted to do?
Right. The first warrant article is for the access road. And to give you some idea, right now, the Hearst house will have a new roof on it by the end of the weekend. And that's being donated by Central Roofing. And that front road right there is nothing but grass. As you can see from the aerial photo, what they look like before. And then after we put in the, the new road that goes around the Lincoln Park area here, so. But this will do, it'll give us a, you know, one of the main roads between, in Mills Field area going across. At a later date, two, three years down the road, we'll do the bottom road there.
Mike, you already bought a road?
But that's, that's what we're looking at there, so we'll have better access. And possibly by the time that, you know, the grounds, you know, we did the other one in August or September, and that gives us nine months, there will be big selling spots and stuff like this so that there'll be more money in our, in our funds that we have to work with also. But six thousand, sixty-six hundred dollars for the road, and then widening the corner is what we have on, on the bed.
I did just help a few weeks back with Leo on putting a roof, piece of poly on the Hearst shed. And it's the first time I kind of looked at the roads because I knew they were kind of on his agenda because he had commented with us earlier. There is, you know, the grooves in the road in front of Hearst's house. And, and Don distracted me that day with Leo that all of these other roads in a hard pack now were just like that. They were similar roads, and the two in front, you can see, have been hard packed. And it does make for nice travel way around. There are a couple of corners where it was a little too tight. When he did his other road, he's looking to improve those corners because it's too tight to turn there. We all did have a little bit of trouble around those corners. So I kind of agree with him that those corners don't need to be, don't need to be curtained around there. And the hard pack does really show you where you should be driving instead of driving all over the grass where you're not supposed to be. And that's just my two senses on it. And it still looks like you're looking to go for one more warrant article?
Yes, on the cremains garden. It's, it's like a, it's like a housing development. We got to put the roads in before we can sell the lots. And we've sold forty-one spots in the cremains garden since we've improved it here this year. We sold two spots up in the cremains garden in Page's Corner and one full body spot.
Is there any cremains garden up there now in Pages?
Well, there is, yeah.
Because I did see the designated areas you had roped off with Leo then, didn't I?
Yeah, well, that's it. I mean, people with Ted Values died, people were parking their cars in that area. And that, they didn't realize that's, that's, you know, cemetery land. And then the other one goes on the other side, as you can see there, Del Kaminsky Lane. And that on the south side, that's the four-by-four for two people lots.
So we're always looking at it was up by the Crosby gate, is that road?
Right, yeah.
That's the one.
That area there, this is.
That's where we saw the roping on the grounds.
So I'll state that, and I, you know, we're trying to do as much of it as we can ourselves, and that's which makes it easier and lowers the price, you know, for J and J.
You want to get one quote?
I called several, and even Blue Ribbon, that does a sponsor for Race Across Dunbar. I called him several times, sent him an email, and no response, you know, so. And then Brian Faulkner also, and so I talked to, you know, two, three people on that, and.
You had an original call from Jeff too, right?
Well, for the room.
Yeah.
Yeah, for the room. And we just revised it and that, but he's going to haul all the materials away. And, you know, we'll do the same thing. We'll put the, call premature.
Huh?
Isn't this premature? It's eleven, it's eleven thousand, five hundred. So you have to write a request for proposal and put it out to bid. Right. So that we get sealed bids here, and you're not chasing after numbers out there now.
Right.
Because everybody's going to know those numbers when, if we're talking about it here, before they even bid on it. So, you know, and you're the one that's going to have to write the conditions of what you want in your proposal, right? So, you know, the warrant article you're presenting is, is a possibility. But you're, when you start to talk about a sole source provider, it kind of gets me the wrong way because I think it's supposed to go out to bid because of the price it's on there. At the time, I didn't know how much it was going to cost. And that, because I, you know, I based it on here, because it's a larger area and it's going to take more cobblestone and stuff like that. And that, so that, you know, that's, that's my starting point. So if somebody can do that same job with the same conditions and everything else, you know, we come in a lower bid. I don't mean to.
But again, you pay because of the number you have there, you're going to have to put this, you're going to have to write an RFP, and you're going to have to request sealed bids. I don't see any way around it.
Well, I guess, I guess, okay, it's like what comes first, the chicken or the egg? But to get the, get the approval.
Your warrant article would come first.
Right.
But the process for receiving your bids, you know, because what I'm hearing you talk, you're talking about sole source. This one was where you got a price, this one where you got a price. One, you should be getting quotes if you can get quotes, and the other one is going to be an RFP, you know? So I just want to bring it home because I don't want that avoided in this.
No, no, I'd be more than happy to do it that way. And, you know, because it was over, and I told the town that because it was over, you know, ten thousand dollars, you know, we've got to put it out for bid. So, but, you know, that's, I'll have, you know, get all the forms and I'll send, you know, we'll post it on the, on the deal, and we'll put all the criteria. I've got plenty of pictures to show how we want it done, so.
And you have.
We're not, we're not even going to tell them, but we're going to have photos to, to back it up. And when I sent that out to Brian and I sent it out to Dennis at Blue Ribbon, I included pictures, you know? So they don't regret it, but sometimes, you know, they're not geared, you know, to do a job like this. J and J, you know, you know, I came up here when they started and had a little bigger there. It's just wide enough, you know? You know, they, they did a great job, and, you know, they got done, so.
Now, Don, we, we talked earlier, because you've been in here before, about the maintenance. Do you add enough money into your maintenance budget to take care of the trees? We talked about, or had you kept pricing on that yet?
I've got pricing, but I've moved, I've been talking with the trustee, and he's going to harvest those trees. That's just, you know, it's not, not on our property. And there's a stream running down there, so there's wetland problems. He doesn't want a skinner or anything like that in there. Jim Dow has the lowest bids for the farm, and he takes it down a tree at a time and cleans up after him and, you know, moves on. He does about fifteen trees a, a day.
And does he have a credit?
And his bid was eleven-two. And I've got bids at twenty-six, twenty-six thousand. And, but that's bringing, you know, five hundred dollars is bringing in heavy equipment. Well, we can't have that heavy equipment in our, on the cemetery. And of course, it's a summertime job. And I, but basically, I talked with him today, the trustee, and he's going to come up here and hopefully he'll let me know in advance, having his partner. I'll have, you know, anybody that's available to come along with me. Because I'm not a tree person, you know, that's not my expertise. But I do know that I don't want to spend any money taking those trees out other than the ones that are on our property. And I do have one here for that, you know, when they get the whole plant.
Yeah.
And, and that would be for all three cemeteries.
Did Jim Dow have the proper crane to lift the tree out? So you didn't.
Nope, it's not lifting the tree out. It's, we can fall them back on the other side there. And he's put in there that he has to take out other trees in order to fall the big trees. But we got trees that are eighty-five to a hundred feet tall, so.
I just seen the way they were leaning on, and then there's many trees behind them. It's a much bigger job, I think, if you're taking a lot of other trees.
Oh, yeah, and the trustee realized it because he harvests this stuff also. But it's, it's gone from must pay for it to, I think he's wrapping his arms around it. And they've got an access road in the little road that runs just off of thirteen where Ted Values homeless. And that way, he's got access in there, but he doesn't think he can get that far. And that way, he's got access in there, but he doesn't think he can get that far back. He doesn't want, you know, like clear our road or a temporary road or anything like that in there. So he's been notified in writing that the trees are threatening our cemetery.
Do we know where our boundary is?
Huh?
Do we know where our boundary is?
Looking at the map, I haven't got a here movement in that, but we can take a look at that. But it's literally right across the back, you know, where the fence line is. That's our home. So that way, you know, if something happens, you know, before we can get those trees down. And I think he realizes that. And he realizes that, you know, all of them are dead ash basically, so they've got to come down anyway. And.
So you're thinking you better maybe give me some help with that?
Yes.
Leo, you had a question?
Couple, but one is, so when is he going to get back to on that? You know, what if he doesn't get back to for eight, 12 months?
Oh, he said he's coming this week.
Oh, this week, okay. So the other question was, what about that big ash at the south end?
Right, no, we'll get that taken care of.
I understand. My point, my question is, so is Dow's going to take that and is he going to drop it on the other property?
He could drop it down, going west to east. Drop it down because if only one person buried in that other.
He'd be dropping it east?
Yeah, he'll be dropping it toward the east.
Well, okay. I'm just curious, that's a big one.
Yeah. So, but that would be the safest way because there's nothing there.
Yeah, I'm just curious, you know, because you have to have permission to drop it off on the other one, you know?
Yeah.
Just curious, that's a big tree.
Okay. So these warrant articles, Don, you're still going to try and do both of them in this calendar year?
I would like to do both of them in this calendar year because they kind of all tie together. And, but, you know, down the road, you know, maybe it'll be this fall by the time everything is done. And I'd like to have a woven house there, you know, once again. And if people, if anyone were coming into the cemetery, you know. Some people, you know, walk there right now, but we may present a, build it and they will come.
Do you have appropriate tree maintenance funds in your current budget? I have, I don't remember what your budget was.
We've got, we've got money there that we can move around.
Yeah.
You know, the fence budget and some of the other things.
Do you have improvements?
Yeah, improvements. So, you know, there's money sitting there.
Cornerstones, you do have fence repairs, you do have money there. Not a big one.
Some of them are just placeholders, you might say.
Right.
And we can go a year without the weed control and.
Does your mowing run the full 10,000?
10,000, yeah. It's 12, 1250 a month. Let's see what that has done is that we've got 479 perpetual care grades. So we've got $2.30 that change for each one of those, which will bring $1,582 back into the general fund.
Okay, I'll do that.
So, you know, we'll be able to, you know, put money back into the town there.
If you had to prioritize the two warrants, which one would you, if you only had a choice of the one in the past year, which one would you do?
Well, what I can do, I would rather do this one here because this is going to generate money. I can tie off the other two lanes and that, so people will have to go to the hard pack road and stay on the hard pack road.
So what I'm proposing, maybe create a dispute the warrants, the most important one this year and for the following year, the next one. I feel two warrants like this may be a little excessive. So I would rather have, I think, know for you which one is the most important to you to get done first. If it's the second one, then I would support that. But they have two of them, I'm a little hesitant.
Well, what I can do is, because that road is, you know, affordable, if I come up with some more funds and stuff like that, I might be able to do it out of my budget.
Understood. That would be a great thing to do.
Yeah.
And that way, you're preserving some of that money, which you found, I sued you for it. But the thing is, you're preserving it for, we don't know what's going to be the big priority next year. You know, priorities change from year to year and by, you don't want to empty all the coffers. I'm glad you want to use it for good improvements, but don't empty them all so you don't have nothing left for a major incident that happens in the following year. Because not an incident that happens, the town budget gets impacted right now.
You know, I realize that. That's what I'm going to do as much fundraising as I can.
Understood.
Get money in, but the point is, if I do this first, then I've got something to make money with. And if the pandemic gets real bad, my business is going to pick up, you know, just that simple, you know.
Well, you know, I'd like to see, support you, I'd like to support your highest priority one first and then maybe in the second year, support the second one. That's where I'm leaning towards.
Yeah, well, this one first and we'll put the other one next year.
What prohibits you from selling cremains plots even if you don't have the guy to lay it out yet? Unless people are dying to get in there.
Well, it's strung off, but it isn't as, I will say from looking at both of them, I mean, Leo and I were up there and you got a stringed off. I could kind of show you where it is with a red string. And then you walk in this garden and you can, you know, you can walk down.
Well, I understand that. There's nothing prohibiting him from selling cremains plots and building that reserve. So he has additional monies going down the road and taking care of the smaller project. I mean, I hate to see him dig into one fund and then you're looking at whether it's replacing a fence or something happening where he needs maintenance money. There's not going to be a whole lot to get at.
Well, what is in that fund, Lee?
Yes, this is spent, I think, at $6,000, right?
Twenty-four thousand six hundred and sixty-six.
So you'd end up, if he just did the one with half of it left.
I don't know if some of this could be done in stages, you know? Because if he could do some of this in stages, it would knock them down below that RFP.
I was going to bring that up as well. Well, by the signature, it looks like you've got seven different rows there. You could break down, you know, one half this year. You could actually try to do both warrant articles if you knocked it down and it would save you from having to do that. Request for pricing paper Bob was talking about can grow to the $10,000 limit. And you did that in two different sections, your cremains there. And that's another alternative too.
Because then you can get three quotes.
Yeah.
You can get them.
And then you can.
And you can, you can do your, you know, you can establish your cremains garden, but it wouldn't happen all at once. It would be in a couple of stages, you know, phase one and a phase two of it.
So Don was nice enough to try to iron out exactly where his funds are and how much they were. And I verified those totals. So left one is the cemetery trust, which we all know, he realized that we have that established. There's actually from October statement that I have that, 24,666. That can only be spent by warrant. Cemetery expense will trust, he currently has $3,018. That's based on the sales of their cemetery plots. That does not include anything like one in the office, he have 200. And I haven't seen the statements from November or December yet.
So he can spend that money?
He can spend all that money, yeah.
But we're going to leave a thousand dollars in, a minimum of a thousand dollars in each one of those. So we're just going to pull a little bit from that.
The next one is perpetual care. That one, we can only touch the interest.
Yeah.
So the principal balance, when I look at the spreadsheet from the MS nine and 10, that is 21,541 based on that 479 plots that are there. The interest that is accrued since then is 15,976. And he can use that annually when he does his calculation, like what he just mentioned to you. He's taken the cost per cemetery mowing, divided it by all total, all the plots, come up with a dollar per plot and then multiplied that by the 479. So he will be turning in, once he gets all the trustees, the signature on that, is it 1500 dollars a share?
It's 15, uh.
Eighty-two.
Eighty-two.
So we can actually include that in our revenue.
Well, let me ask you, other than mowing, you have other maintenance items, like putting blue windows.
Right.
How does it get that?
We have a warrant article for that because this is the last year of it. But we spent, what, 4,400 and change on getting all that done and fixing the granite wall that fell down and stuff like that. So, you know, once you get, what do you?
What I was saying is, there's other maintenance items that you can divide the math out.
Yeah, but the charitable trust are very picky about what you can and cannot include in that calculation. And it would have to be specific to those lots. So they had perpetual care that needed cemetery monuments repaired, then he could tap into that.
You follow what I'm saying, Don? So you have other ones we saw that need to be repaired?
Right.
So you could tie into some of the perpetual care.
East cemetery, there's two of them.
Yeah, and we notified them there, so. I'm just trying to point that out to them that there's other maintenance items you might be able to pull on that perpetual care.
The other thing we might be able to do is to flag all the perpetual care stones. And that way, if something goes wrong with it, then we know that it is a perpetual care stone that got damaged.
Yeah, that's a relevant here.
And so we'll get that list. We've got it in the file here. And we're just going around and we'll start marking these graves or knowing where they are and then identify, you know, where we put a little flag in or whatever.
What was it, a date on there or is that how you?
Well, this was established. They even noted that they.
I thought it was perpetual care of all the graves.
No, because these, this money came specifically from all of those 479.
Those people, they paid for perpetual care.
They paid for perpetual care. And now we don't do that anymore. We have a right to enter, is that what it is?
Yeah.
So we no longer accept the perpetual care. But they're obliging.
You give us a budget now to take care of the maintenance and everything.
And the whole goal for this, these trustees is to spend down that interest. And then they have to petition the court, the petition side cry, and that is with the charitable trust. And so he spends down the interest, spends down this 15, 976, but he has to have valid proof of those expenses. And once he does that, he goes to the charitable trust and says, this is not making us any money. We want petition that we release those funds because we are showing that we're taking responsibility of all lots, not just the perpetual care. So, and then they went along, they would grant you that money and give it to you so that, knowing that the town going forward will be responsible to all those graves anyway.
And then your last one?
The last one is all those fundraisers have been doing, he's over a year, and I gave you, I don't have that copy, it's in your spreadsheet there, Don.
Yeah.
He collected over.
Twenty-two seventy-two.
No, more than that.
Eight thousand six.
He spent some of it. He's, he collected in 2020, $5,137. And he has spent for needs and costs within that, $2,864.66. So that leaves the $2,272, which he is going to encumber, because it's not taxpayer money, to earmark it for services that he needs specific for the cemetery.
It's nice to see these all on one page, Don. I will say that because this is the first time we've ever had that. I can say how much that we've seen that.
Agreed.
It is nice to see that so you can lay out your money and see where you're coming from, where you're going. That being said, I think that these guys have addressed some issues with these warrant articles. You could either do both of them, maybe reduce the cremain garden to, I'm going to leave it on, to a, you know, do half this year and half next year and then make it easier on yourself on getting budgets and pricing. And or just pick one of the two, and if you choose to do the cremain garden, then you, over the $10,000, you'll have to do the request for pricing the normal way, so. I like Bob's idea of phasing it in two sections because we're not going to fill it up in one year. And the thing is, if you phase it through years, I think that's most appropriate. And people will have, you're going to improve half of it in one year. People will see how nice it is. So it'll still be a good marketing tool that you want. And then you can, phase two can be marketed and then next year we do phase two. I, that's a pretty good marketing tool. Well, I like that idea.
Well, the other thing too is you avoid going to a request for proposal where you have to draw out everything that you want to see happen, where you're getting quotes and, you know, you might be able to get three quotes, you might be able to get one or two quotes. But you'll be able to address that and work, you know, a lot differently than you would have to work with a request for proposal.
And it gives you the flexibility. See, if something, a catastrophe happened and you need maintenance on something else, you still have enough. You're not spending it all in one year.
Yeah.
So it gives you more flexibility. Okay, Leo, one thing that.
Yeah, a couple of that. One is, I guess if you're going to go the whole thing in the cremains, the whole project you want. And the RFP, you probably talked to, wasn't J and J put that in here? In the cemetery, in the cemetery, they did the cremains, was it J and J?
Yeah.
You would talk to them because when you write that RFP, you want to know how much ground it was underneath the stones. The size, the gravel, what type of stone you want, you know? You kind of get into it so people, when they're bidding, they're bidding.
Apples.
Yeah, and you can't, you know, because the next year I might put two inches of gravel. The other guy might say, hey, you're going to put four inches of gravel. So what J and J did might help you all.
But that's something I got pictures, I got pictures of.
I know, but pictures don't show you everything.
Well, but it gets you an idea of how we want to construct it. In other words, they put it down.
They show you underneath.
We put in the cloth and then underneath.
Can you see that in the picture?
And then three quarter inch hard pack.
I understand, Don, but can you see that cloth in the picture?
Not in this one, but I've got pictures of it. That's what I'm saying.
So that's why I say you have to write it. You can't post the pictures out there.
No.
So that's what I'm saying. That's where you.
Whether you need six inches of three quarter inch or you need four inches of quarter inch, you're going to have to decide that if there's any movement. Most of them would say six inches.
The thing is also to grant the stone you want onto you, see, that type of stone. Because we've seen before where people use some inferior product in place of. So, you know, you have to be specific. That's, we're just letting you know, you can deal with that RFP through what you already have. If you, if you talk to J and J, they can help you write that up.
Now, again, the problem is. We're talking he might not need it at all.
Yeah, I know. That's what I'm saying, if he does, yeah.
Yeah.
If you don't need that, you can actually talk to someone, know what they intend to do. Gives you an idea of what you're looking for when you're getting the price.
But the other thing I wanted to mention was, I just noticed the road thing, the names, you mentioned it could be a fundraiser? This is not a city. We don't, you know, that's kind of like selling the name, the rights, the name of a stadium or something. It's a small town. I don't think it's right that we do start doing that because there are people already in there that have never had a chance to put their name up there. It's, that should just be left plain and simple, country way.
I didn't even get a road. No, if you've been in the cemetery.
You already got one.
I mean, you're. No, I concur with Leo. I think, I think a more generic historical name of significance at Dunbar would be of interest.
Well, even if there's no name.
But, but the thing is that to put it off a bid for someone's name, that's.
It's pretty.
That's pretty. Yeah, I concur with you.
All the roads to Mount Calvary Cemetery don't have names.
Yeah.
You know, it's just simple, you know?
That's just something to think about.
Yeah.
Just remember when we had a big talk about no strikes in your parking lot, you know? Because it's a kind of a little country town.
Right.
And then we're going to put fence posts, sign posts in the cemetery with people's names on it? You know, that doesn't make sense to me.
The idea is so people can help find their lots.
It's not that big a cemetery.
It's not like Mount Calvary.
Yeah, it's not a big cemetery, you know?
No, I might applaud that. You have some great ideas and I think, just kind of tweak them a little bit and I think, I will support you. But it just needs a tweaking. Bob's idea of keeping it under phases and that way you can split the bid up and make it, from a business point of view, commerce makes it easier to do a smaller bid than a huge one where you can RFPs and advertising and all that kind of stuff.
Don, I've got a question for you.
Wait a minute.
This is, we're not giving you a direction, we're just going to give suggestions.
Right. I realize that.
Because you are.
Because you are, you are the chair. You are the chair of the cemetery committee, so you guys can do this on your own, as you've been told already. This is just, you know, if we say yes at the bottom, or if we say no at the bottom, you know, has the selectmen, you know, agreeing with what your funding is. And we'd like to back you on the ideas, so that's why we try to give you input.
Okay, I've got a question. Number one, this project here, there's the excavating. So if I get a bid from J and J strictly for the excavating, that will be one invoice, and that'll be, let's say, three thousand dollars. Okay, then there's the material, the cobblestones and the hard pack. And if that comes in on another.
Are you breaking up the project, which is still going to come out to a total?
If it's invoice from the same vendor, that wouldn't be a good way to do it.
If it was several different vendors.
If it was several different vendors, I could understand that. But the biggest thing is, I think, is if you phase it, Don, even though they would have to come back with all the same equipment again in the final year to do another half of it.
Well, see, what I'm looking at is possibly doing the front four.
Yeah, to that jug.
And that way we can do the benches also.
Yep.
You know, the wrench ditch and stuff like that.
And then do the next three next year or something.
Yeah, the next three, you know, continue it on.
But what I'm saying, Don, is if you look at your budget for just that one line item, and you look at this budget, you could do probably half of this one and still do that one, so you still get your, both your warrant articles for the price of the second warrant article, which was his favorite one, is what my thought was, you know? So you still get your both warrant articles worked on, they're both no cost to the taxpayer, and you still have over half of your maintenance fund left. If you get into a glitch with the trees, you'll have something to back up on that. You know what I'm saying?
I was going to do a warrant article for the trees, but the problem is, is I don't think we should have to pay for it. You know, I've got to pay for, you know, stuff at East Cemetery and Center, and then the ones on, you know, along the south end and across the front.
I was going to say one thing about the trees, the cheapest one, just like when we looked at the maintenance on the library, is not always the best one in the interest of the town. So you want to make sure whoever does it's fully capable, insured, and insured. But the capability is gone when you're doing trees, the size of that big one there are huge. Because a good company will take the whole tree up, set it down nicely, not be falling it, not be damaging the grounds.
Who took down the nice one behind here? Remember?
I don't remember who it was. Was it Accurate?
Tree, yeah.
I think it was Accurate.
No, I've got it, I've got a bid pending with Accurate right now.
So anyway, he can figure that out, but I'm just saying, the cheapest one may not be the one he knows of, you have to kind of find that out. We don't always go with the cheapest service to the town, we try and do what's best for the town.
Like Lawrence's.
Yes.
Well, the one thing, the one thing, you know, when I talked with Jim Dowell out there, when we looked at, you know, we said, well, you've got some problems here, he recognizes that. But his style, they said, number one, he's got a climber that goes up, you know, the tree. And, you know, they're going to have to block and tackle it to get it to go back. But they're going to have to clear some area there, and there's a stream running down there, so we got, you know, we got things. But he was more attuned than some of these other guys were. They're bringing in big equipment, but, you know, once again, we've got the hard pack there, thank goodness, so they won't sink in too much. But still, you know, we may have some ground damage, you know, because they've got to put the arms out.
But you've got to remember, the guy that's grabbing that tree and picking it up like this, he doesn't have to worry about all them trees behind it, so. I know Jim Dowell's thinking about knocking down a dozen trees behind that one, but these other guys don't have to think about that. Might be more expensive because they're bringing in a hundred thousand pound crane or something, but.
But I, I've used Jim Dowell, and they see he's quality.
I'm not speaking against him.
No, 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 I realize that, and I hear what you're saying, I'd love to have a crane there, but, you know, once again, it's not like it's out in the field or something like that, it's, we got, we got tombstones all over the place, you know? Especially in that one corner, and so they're looking at, you know, starting at the south end and working their way up. And do it that way. Like I say, I'm not a tree guy, that's all come ahead, you guys out there, and, you know, your expertise is what counts. It's refreshing to know that you had Jim Dowell do some work on yours.
And I think Jim, I've heard of him bringing cranes in when he needs them, so.
I knew him before.
Where is the money for the trees, Scott, a lot of?
Huh?
The tree removal, where were they?
Well, he's trying to get the land order to cover.
That's still a work in progress. Okay, I mean, they can't do it till this summer anyway, so.
So it's working, okay, I understand.
But he does have these funds to tap into.
Right, right, okay.
I mean, he has a lot of his maintenance fund.
The problem, the problem that I run into, if I need to tap into that fund that I found there, and that, I got to wait till next March and that to get a warrant article. So if I put together a warrant article to transfer that over to my expendable trust, that way I have access to that money, I won't use it.
Well, you, you could, a warrant article could withdraw five thousand dollars, up to five thousand dollars for the purpose of tree removal, in lieu of generic.
Get generic.
And the thing is, not, you're not committing anything, but the thing is, people, people will be voting on, we have a price of five thousand dollars to augment your budget for tree removal. That would fly, what do you think, Bob?
Up to, yeah.
Up to?
Up to, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so it would be a third one.
Yeah, and I would support that one, I have no problem with that.
Okay.
Because that way, again.
That way we got, we got a flush plan.
No, 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 strictly for trees. Right, strictly for trees, and the thing is, it augments your existing budget, which you may not have enough. You don't want to empty all these lines.
No, you don't.
And.
And, you know, if you have three warrant articles, and you have this one that's asking for eleven-five, you might be better off to see if you can break that up into two sections.
Yeah.
Because it's easier to pass the second one the next year to say to complete that project than it is to ask for this, and people are looking at it and saying, even though it's, there's no tax impact, they feel there's a tax impact. And they're going to say.
Want something to question?
It's, you know, just bringing a proposal, because you're asking to move money, spend money.
And I agree with Bob, if we come the second year, I want to, this is for phase two. We started, we, thank you for voting on phase one, now we have to complete phase two, thank you very much.
And I have states three and four on the other side of the road.
The thing is, that's more countable than having a huge chunk of money at one time.
Yeah.
And it gives you the flexibility that you can change priorities if you have to, because you've still got a reserve.
Yeah. And if you look at the fact that you're doing four and then three later, I think those three are a little larger, but those four, you might be at sixty-five hundred or six thousand on this line. This one's at sixty-six, and then do five on a pepper moor article for the tree work. They're all within reason, and you can complete this one on the following year, and you get all three done. And you've kind of got the selectmen backing on working with you on that.
Isn't the analogy that Jeff Crosby uses of asking for that hundred grand a year?
Yeah, I'll follow Jeff, I'll.
Okay, more, Leo, you have one more thing before we close this subject, Don?
No, I don't think so, no.
Lean, you're good? Don, you're good, you've got some good direction now?
Very good direction, you guys, you know, didn't say I'm going to hear your input. I might be, I'll be happy with the four, the four there, and, you know, I'll be able to do the benches, you know?
Yeah, and that way we can support your warrant articles, and we vote the voters all in agreement, you know?
Okay, I will, good thing we're written, Leo will get them off to you, and we'll go from there.
And you know, Don, so wanting trees, getting back to that, if you have some of your other money, add the five thousand, if the homeowner on the other property does some of the trees, you could also look at doing the worst-case scenario trees this year and do the balance next year.
Well, you're going to have to point out that worst-case scenario.
The thing is, Don, he's good at that.
You've got one with huge bricks right over one of the stones.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I, I realize that, so you need to get that out.
All right, all right, thank you, Don. Appreciate you coming in.
Taking this home so I can share it to Tim, and we do the bid. I have quotes from the world survey in Allen.
Civil code, I think.
To be the agenda.
Maybe I can come down the block.
You weren't reading it, right?
Yeah, I was reading.
You want to make it a packet first, like a folder? No?
And that's here, looks like red, I'm excited. It wasn't very very satisfying just to mix it up. Yeah, this double is one, two. I must have put it in here on the front on there.
It's going to be yellow, yeah.
Okay, so we need to sign a proposal at last week's meeting. We had a discussion to hire a surveyor for the proposed survey of the Kelsey Road.
Lean, you should just, I've got some ready, are you thinking about a plan of a few sentences in there?
Yeah, I would like to work on just a few sentences on what we requested to be done. I might just like to clarify, I worked out with Lean that it's going to be based on the eighteen-twenty-one Kelsey Road layout as well as current conditions of Kelsey Road.
Can we just say generic at all?
Yeah. Yeah, that would be good.
Okay.
If we combine the eighteen-twenty-one layout with current conditions, Lean, and then at a later point, we'll make a determination as the selectmen whether we want to have Kelsey Road monumented, you know, balanced, put in or not.
Right, that's not part of the quote at this.
No.
And the other thing is, what I'm going to do is just articulate a few changes and tweak the contract a little bit with the wording we're going to come up with, and go from there.
And so Lean reached out to get quotes, and we've got a response that one surveyor could not get to it, and we have a good proposal from a surveyor that the town's already used for the turnaround of Kelsey Road, which I became aware of at last month of last week's meeting. And we use them for a monument on the Bowen Dunbar line, so.
This, that document, that's where we have to change the wording or modify, they recommend the changes to the word on that document, and we can go back and forth.
Not on.
But that's one you should deal with, I think.
And Mike, I'm going to have you sign this proposal document, only because you and Bob built it on, I abstained.
Correct.
If you want to sign that in the second.
Well, the thing is, I'd like to have those recommended changes included in this, because this becomes a legal document, I don't want, I want to make sure that.
I think it's only a wording change, Mike, I don't think it's any different on that proposal.
Well, you can write it on there.
Okay.
In, in the place, okay.
Can we, um, okay.
You said all, you said all historical records?
Well, Sculpal Services is review of historical records supplied by the town, and additional information pertaining to the abiding lands of Gaiden and Knoll with respect to Kelsey Road. Research may also include other local, county, and state records as necessary.
Yeah, so that's right.
Okay. They talk about establishment of control at the project, I don't know what horizontal control means.
I've read out of Montalona Road.
Then field survey of present Kelsey Road started in Montalona, including a portion of the access road to the Knoll property and the present turnaround area, survey to include, survey to include roadside monuments and stone walls, if any. So he is looking at historical records, and that's what I want to make sure, because that's what your concern was.
Yeah.
And.
So I think maybe he's covered it in that sentence, Mike, with historical records.
And the thing is, you know, Lean's not a surveyor, so she did the best she could of articulating what we wanted, and I think he picked it up and actually put it in surveyors' language.
So I think that's good to sign, and then we'll just have Lean sound my name.
I think in order for him to do today's record, today's existing, he would have to look at.
Absolutely. That's how he starts it off with. And the thing is, Sculpal Services is limited to the right-of-way determination of Kelsey Road and does not include boundary surveys of any abiding properties. The field survey portion may be limited on, on location of some of the features due to visibility and all the conditions, we know that. The price was reasonable?
Put your title.
Yeah, except, I want to make sure, which I know we, you saw this earlier, and you had some concerns.
I read it not so much that I have concerns with the proposal, what we requested.
Oh, yeah, which, that's only a proposal, this is a legal document.
Yeah.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yes, and Bob, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the contract from Richard Bartlett and Associates for the survey of Kelsey Road.
Yeah, I'll suck in your motion.
And just for the record, I'll put it in the amount, should I have to say the amount?
No, I don't think you should.
Okay. And all in favor?
I'm going to abstain, there's two suggestions.
For the record, David abstained, yeah.
And the reason I didn't want you to put the amount in, Mike, is because what, the selectmen determine him to do it, where the point might change.
Yes.
If there's a monument station or something.
Right, exactly.
You might say, well, I'd like to know clarification here or there.
So it could be.
There's a couple.
Yes, you do. It was only one or two.
Now, that's his thing, what you're dumping.
That's yours.
Yeah, so.
And that's his service.
Okay, Bob, you want to pin it back together for me with those documents?
It's just.
You need that all in a package.
Just for the record, I meant to say to Don, but I thought Don was very studious tonight, he showed presence of good information, and was willing to accept some of our recommendations, and I thought it was much more.
I think they were good recommendations to break it down, he still gets his projects all started. And I would rather do that than do.
Confrontational.
Not just that, have him hold on to a project that he liked and get going.
Right, and the thing is, it still gives him flexibility that if there's a problem, he can swing around other ways. Bob, it's a good idea to split it up.
Well, it makes it a little easier for him too, because if he doesn't know what he's getting, it's going to be easier to go and get quotes, and they're going to ask you what you want, and they may make recommendations. For instance, somebody might say, you only need a couple inches of three-quarter inch, and the other guy will say, you should have six inches, you know, so.
Now, will we review the, will we need the final proof of authority on the, on the bits, or we can just commit?
It's within his jurisdiction.
I just want to make sure of that. Great, thank you.
Okay, we're past that one, let's review the proposed revenues for twenty-twenty-one later.
So, I've decided to include this in tonight's discussion because we are actually getting down to the wire. We'll move those dates with you on the calendars that I presented to you also. But this is fairly short, and I just wanted a little bit of input from the board as to which, if these numbers are fair and/or if you have any recommended changes for them. So these are the revenues that we budget to help offset expenses of the operating budget.
Michael, where's the funds for me? I'm sorry, what did you say, all the funds for me?
I wish this one was paid too.
So you gave one for expenses again?
Well, you asked last week for the detail of the building.
Oh, okay.
And that's what those are.
All right.
Everything that we've spent that's over seventy, is it, we spent seventy?
Seventy-two thousand.
Yeah, seventy-two thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars of general, authorized and unauthorized expenses for building vehicles.
And again, this year, we didn't do any big items on this because we were holding off to see how the town was going to make up with the tax collections due to COVID. And so we decided to do a bunch of little maintenance items this year, which looks like they're pretty substantial amounts. And they ended up all small ones, I left a lot of them, they didn't be done for a long time, so it's good to see this right now.
But twenty-twenty-one, I think revenues are challenging, be challenging too.
Yes.
Okay, if you're, if you're okay, I'll go through each line.
Please.
Land use change tax, again, we do have quite a few properties out there that have current use, but we're, we're seeing a dip in people, you know, disqualifying those properties. I just would like to be conservative, as you can see, we have to split all of our revenues with the conservation commission fifty-fifty.
Yeah, which makes that number change a lot, yeah.
Yeah, we only took in thirteen thousand for the year, which, of which six, six thousand of it was given to the conservation commission. So I'm proposing a reduction on that line by five thousand, so I would like the budget to be.
Yeah, because that's around three percent, sort of give or take, so that's.
Yeah, fifty percent, that's twenty percent, yeah. So if you guys are okay with that, you'd like to go with that number?
Yes.
All right, next line is yield tax, would you get? All right, next line is yield tax. Would you get timber tax? And that is entirely the town's revenue. I'd like to keep it the same. Last year we were high, but that, those are things that go up and down.
Yeah, what about those trees at the cemetery?
Are you okay with that number?
Yes.
Okay, tax collector payment in lieu of taxes, that has to do with interest and other charges. I'd like to keep it at a thousand dollars. We were just under that budget. Interest on taxes, that actually has a group series under the thirty-one ninety that includes like eight or nine different accounts, maybe more. Last year, the total lines, we took in twelve thousand five hundred five dollars. We were budgeting fifty. I'd like to recommend keeping it at the fifty.
Why, why not reduce it to like twelve?
We could, um. It's up to the board.
This is gonna be another, I mean, this year is gonna be starting off with a whimper, right?
Correct, but I've already seen bottom line reduction over last year's.
I don't mind it at fifteen, I don't.
Because it includes all those accounts on both categories.
I'm just looking at that now.
Yeah, I don't mind it.
Yeah, okay.
Leave it at fifteen, or do you want to reduce it?
I don't believe in fifteen. It's only three thousand. I think that. We've just done a big short fall.
Okay, next categories, licenses, permits, vehicle registration. Again, all those come under the same group account, thirty-two twenty. Last year, we budgeted six seventy-five, the total for that category, we collected seven hundred, two thousand forty-two dollars. I think it would be best just to keep it flat from last year, unless you think it's the best to reduce it.
No, six seventy-five is all right.
Okay, as the town is growing, we do have more people and more cars. Building permits, they did have a good year. Donna's very, very diligent in making sure she collects her fees. I still say because of the COVID, we should keep it flat last year, even though we exceeded our budget.
Yeah, I think that's a much better.
Okay.
Maybe next year we'll look slightly on that. If we see two years, we'll study.
And then the other licenses, it's a group of categories, thirty-two ninety, then for all of our companies, about ten accounts. We typically budgeted ten thousand, we came in at twelve thousand five oh five. I recommend leaving it at the ten thousand forty next year.
Great.
How did you get to twelve? You know, there's a.
From the next, from the next page. So they're all under the category thirty-two ninety, so we have twelve five oh five that we've got. Ten is okay? All right, um, next category is driven from other governments. Shared revenue, that was a bonus we got from the care, or gopher, which we were aware of and we budgeted. I won't be budgeting anything there because we haven't heard of anything coming down the bike. Highway block ads, we've always been conservative in budgeting ninety thousand seems to have worked. And as Jeff mentioned earlier during his discussion, that the, the state is a biannual budget, so we're good through at least July for a known.
So we're good for half the year.
Yeah, it all depends on what they do for the second.
You know, I can't see with all the money that the state is getting from the federal government reference to COVID that they're gonna have a shortfall, because we're hearing a ton of money coming out.
Did you hear with the, the shortfall so far?
No.
Seven hundred and fifty million?
Really?
Yep, state didn't have it.
Yeah, that's before the government check comes to us.
Well, my point is, you already got that shortfall, you know, so.
It's kind of behind for a year.
So you're okay with ninety, or do you want to reduce that?
No, I.
I, I figured down another can just to.
You're looking at highway block?
Highway block.
Yeah, we can make that maybe if you want this year. Try that. We can always bump it back up.
What do you think, Bud? Any excess would be.
It's established on the last go-around that we had with the ninety. So it's gonna be ninety, even though we put, even though we put it at eighty.
Oh, well, we can, we can change. I'm sending this for this proposed budget in your operating budget that we're gonna vote on. This is gonna offset your taxes.
It would only up our expenses. I hope to be a little.
All right.
Yeah.
Leave it at ninety. I would say leave it at ninety, sorry.
If there is surplus, it increases your, if there's excess, it'll increase the surplus. If there is less than, you hope that another line will offset it, bottom line. And you'll see that on the last page.
Right.
So we'll leave that at ninety?
Yes.
Federal Forest P I L T, we get that every year. That's part of the flood control areas. It's from the federal government, not the local. So I typically budget three thousand, usually comes in all by ear. I came with that. Flood control reimbursement, again, that's for the Army Corps land that was taken. I budgeted the same as last year, seventy. Are you okay with this?
Uh huh.
Next line, again, rooms and meals. I looked at last year's budget, one thirty-five. Again, that was primarily because they are on a biannual budget. And I personally think that we're going to be okay this year, but it might, you might see a change for ninety-seven.
Yeah, because you're gonna see a change because some of the rooms and meals are obviously going down.
Yeah.
But you already, seventeen thousand from what we got last year, lower.
Right. So leaving it at one thirty-five.
That's good.
Yeah, we're excess, we had excess of last year, so you wanna leave it at the one thirty-five?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mine will take on.
Yeah. And then we have the next income from the apartments, category thirty-four oh one. That's includes a number of different lines, bottom line budget for those two, all right, is sixty thousand. We collected fifty-two thousand four seventy-four for all those lines combined. I left the income from the departments at the same, thirty thousand. And then the other item that's really identified in large numbers is the recycling income. I didn't know where we were gonna go with that. We did see, for awareness, that there's been, you know, he's predicting a decrease in it. And you can see right there that's all is revenue from the transportation that they send out for any type of revenue points. Came in substantially low. That's probably one of the lowest years I've seen in a long time, so I decreased that by ten thousand.
I think that's reasonable, because we're gonna have a good, happy year.
So you're at fifty instead of sixty?
Correct, for the combined.
See these two here then?
Yeah, no, but I think that's a, that's a good.
Okay, so that, those combined lines will be fifty thousand. And then, next category, sale of town property. We don't typically budget anything there. The thirty-four hundred dollars, one-time sale of the transportation truck. And even though it's in his revenue, the board approved, the department had using the proceeds for uplifting his truck. So that really doesn't go into the general surplus that's been spent. Next, category, interest on investments, thirty-five oh two. We only collected fifty percent of that last year, so I decreased it by, to one thousand from the three thousand.
Uh huh.
If you're okay with that, I'll continue on.
If there's a rate coming down again.
That will probably, I think it goes zero.
That's right. We all know why that, so there won't be any incentive from that any longer. And then, the other category, thirty-five oh six, we do not budget anything. We had two insurance reimbursements. One of them, the board decided to take it as surplus. The other one, the board decided to apply it to twenty twenty-one's, I think it was the workers' comp line that we put like four or six thousand dollars towards that. And that we identified in the expense report that I present for the board. So those numbers combined come up to one million ninety-five thousand dollars. Last year, we had proposed one million one hundred forty-one for ninety-nine forty-eight. So the proposed budget for twenty twenty-one is seeing a decrease of forty-six thousand nine forty-eight.
Lean, do we have an estimate of what the insurance is gonna pay on the house that we had?
Um, there's an email here, a man walks discretion, and she, again, I keep trying to communicate with her every couple of days, and Dave will read the correspondence. But we have still work in progress. She's not heard from him. And I had asked her, based on your discussion last week, if we need to possibly get an estimate of what it would cost to repair it because what they give us on their side may not be adequate for, you know, for you guys to accept.
We'll talk about that when we read that other letter again, because I think that might.
And then it's just, I did not note this year, but our proposed budget for twenty twenty was one million one forty-one, one forty-eight. And I just merged the town clerk's funds in there.
Where are you, where are you on now?
The middle column. Our excess, our excess for the twenty twenty revenues is seventy-six thousand four thirty-nine over budget. We do nothing with it, and we lapse into your surplus, the last page.
Chief of.
The last page, middle column. The left column is what we've set, we proposed to the voters.
Yeah.
We have exceeded that by seventy-six thousand four thirty-nine.
Oh, yeah.
Okay? So if you do nothing with it.
Which is what we like to do. And what's, what's the basic four thirty-nine?
Seventy-six four thirty-nine. Last year, you guys applied that to all the warrants and the operating budget.
You had to try and keep the taxes flat.
Right, every time your operating budget goes up, you have to make sure that your surplus increases because even if you're leaving your surplus exactly where it is, like I did point it out, Dave, we had four point eight or four point six.
We need day fund shrinks.
It does strike because your budget is increasing, and you have to try to maintain a wide percent.
I don't mind, Dave, I think keeping this revenue is putting right to the taxes. I think at this point, we get hit with revenues anywhere.
Yeah.
We, I don't want to run our money mid-year and then have to draw onto the rainy day fund.
Well, let's see where our, you know, we have to see where the rest comes once we put the warrants in and see where we're at.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
And then they're juggling those ideas, laying raw, and yes, we can see that. Some years we're left alone, and some years we're left alone.
Okay, so, next item.
And this is just the revenues, it's not the overall budget.
I know, the thing is, how do we figure out?
I'll have you write it for me.
Looking at the budget process, we all worked on it last year. We came pretty close, almost, we were spot on.
Yeah.
We need to run out.
Okay.
And we want to be able to roll those in the others.
Exactly. Well, good, I think it's a testament to the whole board.
So I presented the board with the three months of our budgeting calendar. Not your typical meeting calendar.
On the board, the next subject to me, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, that's what it is.
All right, so Lean's speaking, I'm just gonna review the calendar and meetings and deadlines that we need to finish up for the.
I'm only bringing this to your attention because we are getting down to the wire here. Every week, the weeks will run quicker and quicker, and a lot of things that we have to meet, to meet the deadlines. So today is the seventh, so that gives us three weeks in the month of January to finish any proposed budgets. I should have all of my numbers for you for next week. That will, that will give the board a couple of weeks to review all the numbers combined and see what your bottom line total is, make cuts, or any other recommendations. That takes us right into February, and February is going to go by very quickly. I have a lot of highlighted deadlines there. If you guys can't come up with a good, solid budget to propose, you may have to consider a workshop on the first of February. Tuesday, the second, I had mentioned to you guys early on that we had someone inquire about a petition warrant article. If that person pursues that, that is due by end of business day on Tuesday, the second of February. Dunbarton Elementary School, proposed budget workshop on Wednesday, the third. We will have our proposed first tentative public hearing on the budget on Thursday, February four.
Will that be by Zoom only? I recommend, Dave, or you, what do you think?
Where are we going, Mike?
Thursday, February four. We don't typically have a lot of people turn out.
I've, I've seen this room full of people, full of people from some of the meetings.
I'll tell you what, we don't have to do Zoom only, but we can do it on Zoom. So I never Zoom running everything. I didn't probably already tell you last time.
Right, I did too. So it works well this year, but I would like to restrict the public access here for that meeting for safety reasons. I don't want, I don't want to have fifteen people sitting in the audience. It's, we have, when people come in, we usually have about five, six people at most. They have fifteen, twenty people in here, and that's not unheard of for our budget here. It's, it's too many for this room.
Yeah, I haven't seen that in a long time, but it could happen.
Right. I would rather do a Zoom, and that way, if you want, you can listen to it.
It's not so much the budget meetings as it is when Jeff has his meeting in March. You know, it's rolling. That's when usually our people show up and want to be here.
But we have.
I mean, if it's possible, you never know.
So if you guys decide to do that, I would like to propose that we have a good, solid budget to present to the voters and put it on our website. At least give them the notice that we're going to be discussing this.
And we can also put it on the screen.
Yeah, yeah.
So Donna can load it up on the screen for us, which would be, so anybody else.
And the thing is, all right, let's, let's just talk reality, though. Zoom, let's say we have thirty people online. Zoom should be able to handle thirty, and we can entertain questions.
Okay, I just want to let you know that there's been a very heavy workload in my office, and I have not done one Zoom meeting on my own at all.
We've been asking Donna to come and help us, so that we have.
We're gonna, if that, if you're okay with that, I would like to do that if she's willing.
If she's been running them and if she feels comfortable, we can ask her to come in. But we don't have to make that determination.
No, but we, we just think, we just, advance notice, we think that.
But there are many weeks here between now and our public hearing, so we should be giving the, you know, the.
I'll go ahead and give her a heads up, ahead, that that may happen. One can stop and ask her to see if she'd mind doing it. She probably will have an issue with it.
No, I mean, she's gonna be paid for it, obviously, so that's no big issue.
All right, and I did send out my memos today of asking people to bring their town reports into me by the twenty-fifth of January because I really need to have that whole document ninety-nine percent.
When do you want the rough draft of the selectives report, so I can start writing that?
The twenty-fifth, no later.
Okay.
Ideally, it should be sooner so that you can.
I'll do it, I'll try to do it for twenty-first.
So that you can know about it at the meeting?
Well, you want to send it to the other selectmen and have them.
You said the twenty-fifth, the department heads, you know.
Is that all right?
I just sent them up.
Oh, you sent it?
I'm doing draft of it.
They got their emails.
You guys, for punctuation, I'll, you know, come on, right?
See if there's any ideas we want to put in.
So last year, I got that memo out to the departments on the eighth, so I'm a day early this year. Even though I prefer to try to get it out by the thirtieth of December, it's just been a really crazy year. And the reason for that is because after our public hearing, if there are no big discussions from the public, I have to get those warrants and budgets into the town report by Friday, the fifth, and then deliver it to the printer so that he has enough time to return this print to me so that we can give them enough time to print it and get it out to the public.
You found a different brand this year?
No, I'm actually going with the same company. He gave me a reasonable quote. It's only a few hundred dollars more than last year, so. So you can see that all these dates.
All right, so can you, you have a snow date, is there a problem with the snow date?
Yeah.
We have a problem, no, and we can't get any printer in there.
Well, I think what we have done in the past is held our regular public hearing date, and if no, if there was no turnout, but if we do open, I mean, uh.
Zoom.
Zoom, you're gonna have the public input from that.
Yeah, that, that piece of snow.
It really will cover us.
Okay, that works.
But what we've learned over the years is when I put the notice, which is required to give the public seven days, put both dates in the notice so that they know in the event that there is.
Catastrophe, game making.
Yeah, then we won't be holding it the following week, so we've covered ourselves.
And if we do decide to do that, that's still in the long view and here if we're.
Oh, absolutely. But the thing is, I, I would rather have a surveyor than having twenty people in here. Okay. Well, Donna, I saw Donna set up this thing yesterday, which worked really well. And I think by time, another couple more weeks on it, she'll be, she'll be very good on it.
Last time we went on the Zoom meeting, we went through all kinds of different things and how to turn on and off people and turn off. I actually use my cell phone for audio and speaking. I use my computer for the visual. I used my computer for the visual and it worked real well.
And that was for you at all?
Yeah.
Okay. See, I haven't really been.
The Dunbarton Town Hall Restoration Committee meeting got canceled last night, even though that one was a Zoom. And so it allowed me to go into the planning board, uh, workshop for that Zoom meeting. Okay. Moving on to the agenda, I'm going to go on to mailbox items. I'm going to make sure I didn't miss anything.
We were the order.
Yep, the first thing I want to bring up is, uh, Donna Larson sent us a, uh, photograph of Justin Nolte, myself and, uh, really up doing the roof. And just coming up to her building to look at done. And maybe as a notice in here from Donna that they're going to accept some, uh, century roofing. He's going to put a new metal roof on that building. And he's going to meet with him to get that squared away, so I'm just going to sign it.
And then tomorrow.
They have one.
They got their dumpster, you know.
Awesome.
That's a donation, right?
Yep.
It is. Small work, but still a good donation.
So, um, Lynn, can we put out, since they're starting on it right now, you realize it's going to be a fun. Can we put a thank you letter out from the Board of Selectment to Century Roofing?
If you want to stick around, I have something to light up or something.
Could I, could you also, uh, consider, he may require something that we've done for other people, like their tax thing?
Yep, the letter that you guys signed.
Right. Maybe if he gives a tax.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Okay. Nice, and I guess that was in our box, I swear we reviewed that one first, I'll put it in there. Okay, we've got a poll license to sign there.
This one poll license is replacing four polls of County Road.
Okay, I've got a, um, building permit monthly update. The department law, 260 permits in total. 409 inspections, septic, 16 septic systems and 2020, uh, year of 2020. The annual revenue last, we just saw was $30,804. It's a slight increase from 2019. Need some guidance on that one. Yeah. It looks like there's a couple of people who just purchased property in Dunbarton and they'd like to put their RV on the property while they're constructing their home. Anticipated timeline would be end of March to the end of July. The zoning words are, Tom is silent on that. I do know other instances where it's been done in town. During the construction process, I got to tell you that I don't really have an issue with that because it's very temporary.
Right, and things we, I'm, we're in the middle of our, we call a clock and load, a house burns down. What are you going to do, tell them they can't warm the house for a few months before they recover their house? And we are, it is, Mike is absolutely correct, we're silent on it. But the thing is, I think we should give some, we'll add to here.
I think so as well, and, uh, I think, Lynn, if you can let Donna know that, you know, the boards have, do you have any other?
Well, I was going to say, as long as we limit it to that period of time.
Yep.
And if they need additional time, if they request additional time. And the only reason I'll say that is this house, it's on management road, a trailer that was there temporarily, that's now a permanent structure. So, you know, sometimes you put something there and it gets forgotten about and it stays forever.
Issue of temporary permit.
Temporary, good point, Bob.
You know, I mean, that one there now, they're doing all kinds of work around the barn and everything, but that trailer is still right there. It hasn't gone anywhere in the last 12 years.
End date would be good.
What's end date?
And, and as Bob said, if they need more time, they'd be coming.
Yeah, if, if it gets into a problem where they can't get into the house yet, I, you know, we would not request any time. I don't want to see it perpetuating into 12 years. And this trail was put there because a guy was going to build a house and it never happened, so.
Okay, and the last thing on there was 41 Kemble Pond Road. Just so the board knows and the public, um, the house and chase shed is completely empty. The property is locked. I have keys so we can access it. Tomorrow is the date that the container is leaving and move into a private residence, residence in Bedford, that, uh, the previous renter is going to have control over. And so the place will be vacant and as soon as we have the insurance information squared away, we will proceed with demolition. There are a couple of things that, uh, appear to be being removed from the property.
Correct, and we, and I brought that up. I'd like to have the police, uh, maybe do some patrol now.
Yeah, I did notify the chief that it's vacant and asked his officers to patrol it. But I think we'll also put up a couple of, uh, no trespassing signs because even though we have it taped off, um, it's taping off the house. I think we'll take the yard off because, um, somebody posted on Facebook and I think it's getting a lot more traffic than it probably should be.
Yeah.
So.
Somebody removed something that wasn't, that they weren't authorized to remove, sorry.
Yeah.
And there's something nice in my house.
And you know, the, uh, the tie-up lien for the horses there, somebody had already whittled that lien.
Yeah, they took the.
Oh, they took.
Well, they're trying to take the, was it a?
The, the ring.
Kitchen post?
Yeah, the post in the ground.
They're trying to get it because it's leaning out and they took the bird bath that was given me.
I just said that the address, if that doesn't come out, you'll be wrong.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm going to work with the police chief to try and get some additional patrolling through there because there's no need of this happening while we're waiting for a.
Yeah.
Natural disaster happens in the house, we don't need this additional work. So that brings the board up to date on that.
We said, John, can we sever our relationship with this John?
It looks like, um, going through the legal review, like, as far as him being off the property and out there and the container and all these personal properties we have, but we do still have some liabilities about his housing. And, um, we did get some more correspondence back this week that Lynn and I reviewed, where we do have some obligation to help him get some housing in. Uh, they, they did have a meeting with him this week to work on that, try and coordinate it.
Actually, he canceled on us.
Oh, he did.
Yeah, it should be documented and he canceled.
It is being documented, documented.
So, Jeanne is trying to follow through that with our welfare.
But at what point do we sever the relationship?
Um, we have some guidance from our town attorney in there and what he'd like us to see us do is to go through several attempts trying to help them with housing. And then after that period of time, it'll be determined that we've done as much as we can do as a town.
So you, are you going to reschedule another meeting with him or?
Um, I've, I've got to try to reach him because he won't give us his cell phone and he don't want the town to call him.
Okay.
Do you have his phone?
I can tell him I just have the, uh.
Again, could you document this too? The thing is, what I don't want to do is have the town end up on the liability scale.
Right. Uh, from my last conversation with him, he did not want to be labeled welfare. He thought he could just come through the.
Well, I think he's misconstrued the title of welfare. She's the one that has to handle the existing part of it. And what we were trying to do is, he did not, he was not interested in welfare. There are still tools available that would help them get into the, that, um, living.
Right, so emergency housing.
Yeah.
So it would benefit the town to try and follow through and shut up, is what our attorney said, so.
That's what we're going to continue to sign.
I would just ask Lynn to continue to work with him and document everything you do now, if it helps, apparently.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Lynn did bring up another point, and I think we might want to pursue this as a board of selectmen. Just so we know that the insurance companies treating us fairly with their estimate on the fire damage, we might want to get an estimate to repair that roof from a contractor. And I think that if we do that, I'll work with Lynn tomorrow, maybe give her a few names to call. If we do that, we have a professional bid, they come in with one number. We say, well, we already do have a number from a reputable company here.
Why are they lowballing?
And yeah, so it'll give us a good basis if they come back to us and lowball. There was no personal property damage as far as his property, what he said.
Okay.
So he was able to remove it and move the stuff, so, um, there was no damage that way.
So as far as anybody knows, there's no structural damage other than the roof?
Yeah. Well, there's water damage now, but.
Yeah, it's not too bad. It's not just the roof because the walls are tipped down.
That's, okay.
So it's roof and walls and everything.
Along with the roof, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll have it all looked at, I think, and we'll get an estimate at least so we can make a proper decision.
To accept it or not.
Or accept it or fight it a lot, so.
I don't even know how he could have stayed in overnight in that place.
I'd pretty much stayed in the kitchen.
Well, you know, it's, it's pretty well wide open.
He closed out those doors and I actually, I went in and ate it and they ate running by it, it was pretty delicate.
It was very comfortable, a few times I went in there, yeah. Clean.
Yeah, so it's, uh, it's a work in progress, but I think that was a good point to bring up and it was the same thing I was thinking about. You know, later on down the road, when they come to us with a number, we're going to have to determine what we're going to do with it.
Give you an idea that they're lowballing you or whatever, yeah.
You know, I think they're taking a little bit, they're being a little like molasses here.
I know, that's not, I mean, if we needed to repair it.
It's pushing almost 30 days.
Yeah.
Okay, and the next thing on the, uh, mailbox items. Lynn sent a department head letter out looking for the annual town report information from all the different department heads. And, uh, she showed them the files and everything that they should use to do the town report. And, uh, she's waiting for the response back. Looks like you sent that out to her, right? Okay.
So you know your marching orders, right Dave?
I do. Okay, um. This is a subject we just spoke about. This was an email that Lynn has sent out to Primex, trying to get an answer back from them. And, uh, asked Primex if we should get an estimate, so we'll, we'll process that one. Um, and this thing I'd like you guys to read in private, but it's the response from the town attorney.
I brought my forward it to you guys in your emails.
In reference to the response of our liability as a town to the.
I also, I also shared that with the welfare director.
And, and some of it's repetitive, some of this already has been taken care of, like the director. We already had severe ties with him, he's moved his items out now. So a lot of this was already taken care of, even though we've got the legal documentation to it. Okay, uh, one other thing. Woody had called me and, um, I have a homeowner in town here called, "Since the COVID is ramping up here, we've left the two lanes open at the transfer station." And, uh, this person that called, they said, "Real susceptible to the COVID." And with it ramping up, he asked if we could go back to a single lane at the compactor area again. I didn't really have an issue with it, I think it's something, you know, we did the town hall here, it's by appointment only and we really didn't address too much of the transfer station. And I think that one, a single lane at the, at the, uh, at the, uh, compactor area wouldn't be a bad idea for a short period of time until this does come back into control.
Yeah, and they're sharing somebody out there anyways because they notice even when you're going to drive behind you.
Yep.
They crisscross in front of you.
Right.
But they're pretty close, so that somebody, at least you should be out there, you know, holding the person. It doesn't take long to get rid of you.
I think they should go back to some more cones and get that set up a little bit.
Barrel, barrel cones.
People are creeping up a little bit, like Bob said, more than they used to, so.
Well, and, and it is picking up because where I went, 97 cases now.
A few more cases, really, today.
But you know, I, I think the states. The state's at about 10.4% of the population, so that's pretty high, I think. You know, we weren't even at 1% when we did all these on the moves. So, what do we do, uh, call Woody in the morning lane and tell the consensus of the boarders to go back at the compactor area to a single lane and to put out the appropriate cones for that and signage.
Are you going to enforce that also at the recycling?
No, I think just do that.
Because I know that I, when I'm in one lane or the other, I will stay in my car more than a car lane away. Then I pull up and I am very organized with my disposal stuff, start to remove and then everybody comes in and they go right around me and, and start.
Well, if you want, why don't we?
When you were talking about that, that's what I was talking about. When you're pu, when you're pulling up with the two lanes there.
Mm-hmm.
You've got people even parked behind you that are crisscrossing and then.
The line documented over by the compactor.
That's almost where you need someone there to ask those people to stay there until those people have left. And then they can move up and have their own turns.
Right, so why don't we ask him to go back to his original layout where he had it set up for three different lines? A through line. And, uh, you know, to go right straight to the compactor and then the recycling.
If somebody doesn't want to recycle, they can just stop mainstream old trash.
Yeah.
Avoid that too. Kind of a piece of purpose, but we consider that as a contingency.
Um, I think the last one I have here, um, we've got, um, from home page here, I think, party, I'm sorry. Um, we've got a thank you letter for giving out. Um, like, like I said earlier in that meeting, uh, the gift cards that we gave during Thanksgiving, Christmas, I think were well appreciated from the town employees this year.
Yeah.
And, uh, I've heard it on that and the COVID money, but we do have this, uh, thank you letter. If you guys wanted to read it, it'll be in the mailbox items here.
I, I, some anecdotal responses, people did appreciate the COVID money. And especially the, uh, transfer station employees, it was unexpected. And they're on the front line dealing with the, which are more people than the, uh, police department.
Yeah.
Okay, then we go to public comment.
Oh, actually, I wanted to know, we were talking about the timber tax. Were you getting any of the money from where, on this over?
That's the Army Corps?
Yeah, State, yeah.
They had this up timber, um, harvest.
I would think that's where the majority of that money came from, because we were.
But you already.
Yeah.
No, no, that one there was actually on hike. Yeah, a really big cut.
Oh, okay, no, so that's.
They haven't cut, you know, they haven't finished.
Yeah, right, I see, I took a ride through there this year, they really cut quite a bit there.
Okay, anything for town administrator?
No, I just need to go into non-mob.
Okay, and Mike, you have a good.
Uh, well, yeah, I'm just curious, next week, are we going to start to work on the budgets that we've received also?
I would like to, I think it.
Because, you know, there's some of those that won't take us long to go through and get them done.
I think what, uh, what's really helpful for you guys is if you have the whole budget all together.
Yeah, I like that too, so.
I will work on my numbers and if, if, um, if you'd like, with my numbers, I can include the whole budget, all of them, so that you can then take your single sheets and look at it as a whole and we should be able to vote.
Okay, because I, I kept all the money in my folder.
Yeah, okay.
So I do, I know what areas I wanted, like adjustments in.
Yeah, okay.
So, you know, I just said that we don't have to wait for one night trying to get everything done.
Oh, yeah, no.
It'd be easier for everybody.
Or something next week then?
I don't see any reason we can start with something like.
I'll make, um, my, the last, um, budget numbers. Put that to you first and then I'll put them all in the entire report and then you can compare your single sheets with what Mike wanted to talk about.
On the way in, Lynn asked me what to put down for whole. And, uh, I told her we had written in the handout and then 15,000 and she was at 14,785 or something, she was right there at the 15 number, so. That number we put in for the part time of their works.
Oh, did you crunch it? Because I did tell her.
Yeah, she asked me on the way by and I said, "I think we penciled in 15,000."
Yeah, I told her.
She had like 14,785, so she had the same number.
Okay.
Dave, I can make a motion to go to non-mob for our, say, 91 Alpha.